All right, everyone. Welcome to the Pinal County Board of Supervisors meeting for May 26. We'll first open up with an invocation from Supervisor Goodman, and then I'll lead everyone in the pledge. Thank you.
Please stand and join me in prayer. Our heavenly Father, as we come before thee at this time, we do so with gratitude and appreciation in our hearts for the many wonderful and great blessings that we have and that we're able to enjoy. We're grateful for the freedoms of this country in which we live, in which our forefathers fought and died for, our freedoms and the opportunities that we have before us. We're grateful for the privilege that we have of being able to serve our communities, our people here in Pinal County but in our country. We're grateful for the military and for our armed forces, for the sacrifices they and their families have made and continue to make. We're grateful for our local law enforcement and for their efforts and for their desire to serve us as people, to help keep law and order. We ask special blessings upon these men and women wherever they may be. Watch over them and protect them. As we meet this day as a board, we pray special blessings upon each and every one of us as we exercise our conscience and as we move forward in what we feel is the best efforts and the best things for this community and for our county. We pray for these blessings and we say these things in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Join me in the pledge of allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you Supervisor Goodman. Brings us to first item on the agenda, a call to the public. Consideration and discussion of comments from the public. Those wishing to address the Pinal County Board of Supervisors may appear in person or submit a written comment, which shall be submitted to the clerk of the board by close of business by 5:00 p.m. the day prior to the meeting. Comments shall be no more than 250 words. Actions taken as a result of the public comment will be limited to the directing staff to study the matter and reschedule the matter for a further consideration and discussion at a later date. Ms. Clerk, Ms. Natasha, do you have any?
Chairman, the clerk of the board office has not received any call to the public comments.
Thank you. Is there anybody in the public that would like to address the Board of Supervisors at this time? Okay, oh, okay. Your name and general location in three minutes.
My name's Roberto Ravelis, resident of Gold Canyon. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm commenting in reference to consent items Q and R. And first of all, I want to commend and thank our county management team for its timely request of funding under the recently approved American Rescue Plan Act. The disastrous public health and economic impact Pinal County has experienced during the pandemic crisis underscores the importance of these newly available federal funds to mitigate the residual and ongoing damages to all public and private sectors of Pinal County. In considering use of the rescue plan resources, I encourage high priority be given to increasing our overall vaccination rates, thereby reducing Pinal County's COVID risk level. It is especially encouraging to note that funding is now available so that each board member can selectively pursue funding for critically needed challenges of mental health and substance abuse, family childcare programs for senior Americans, emergency rental housing and affordable home ownership, restaurant and small business assistance, along with investments targeting transportation and water infrastructure, plus other community safety needs which impact our county's quality of life. The return on any of these investments will clearly be a more vibrant and healthy community with a robust rescued economy that ensures Pinal County continues to offer wide open opportunity, Mr. Chairman. Again, thanks to county manager Leo Liu and his team and to the Board of Supervisors for your initiative in securing this badly needed early funding. And thanks also to Arizona Senators Sinema and Kelly and members of Congress Gallego, Grealva, Kirkpatrick, O'Halloran, and Stanton, who voted for this critical investment in our county, state, and nation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Ravelis, are you going to want me to pull those on the consent items? I'm just, I'm a little ahead of myself, but I'll be glad to entertain that if you'd like.
No, Mr. Chairman. On the contrary, I heartily endorse and commend you for putting them on the agenda.
Just one clarification there. Thank you, Mr. Ravelis. Okay, anybody else? Okay, seeing none. We'll move to item number two. Discussion approval or disapproval of a proclamation in recognition of Janine Rovit upon her retirement after 25 years of dedicated service to Salt River Project Utility Company, SRP, for the Pinal County region. Janine. So, has everybody had a chance to read the proclamation? Somebody having questions or comments about the proclamation?
I do Supervisor. You know, I've had the privilege and honor of being able to work with Janine over the last four, four and a half years. Well, you retired not too long ago, so... But what a privilege it was of working with her with a utility company that has been very helpful in our county. And so, Janine, I appreciate you and all the things that you've done, working with them and working with us. Thank you.
Yeah, and I've had the privilege, I'll say, I've had the privilege of working with her almost 20 of the 25 years. So, I've known her for a long time and she's been a terrific asset and championing growth and infrastructure and all those types of things that we need to move forward here in Pinal County. And she's been a great advocate for this area. So, thank you for all those years of service, Janine. Anybody else?
I have a similar story. When I first got elected to a position and I didn't know the players and there would be problems and say, "Well, we need to call Janine. She can do it." And who is this Janine person? And then you would call her and, and yes, it would get done. So, yeah, it was amazing.
So, what's the board's pleasure on this proclamation?
With that being said, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve a proclamation in recognition of Janine upon her retirement after 25 years and for her dedicated services she's given to Pinal County.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. I just have it. We're not done with you. So, we have the proclamation that we want to sign to give to you and we also have a little gift and I think we're going to do a little photo op. So, I'll recess this long enough to go down. The proclamation is inside the room here adjacent to our chambers and... Oh, you need to read it. Oh, you have it here. I'm sorry, I'm way ahead of myself. I didn't, we didn't have a dress rehearsal yesterday, so I'm a little bit... Read the proclamation. Thank you.
Whereas, Janine Rovit began her extraordinary career at Salt River Project Utilities Company, SRP, on February 19, 1996 as a community relations representative. Whereas, Janine has dedicated her career to serving SRP in her early work as a representative in community relations and later as a leader in public involvement and retiring as senior government relations representative responsible for managing SRP's critical relationships within Pinal County and with chambers of commerce. Whereas, her career began with a passion for understanding the interests of residents and customers and grew to extend to the concerns of public officials and business leaders dedicated to serving those residents. Whereas, Janine has an authentic interest in people, understanding their interests, and finding ways to develop solutions to the most complex problems. Whereas, Janine has constantly demonstrated the utmost professionalism, compassion, and creativity in addressing challenges on behalf of SRP and the communities and residents it serves. Whereas, Janine has a special appreciation for Pinal County, its residents, businesses, and leaders who work tirelessly to cultivate economic growth and ensure a vibrant quality of life for our community. Whereas, Janine holds dear the culture and character of Pinal County and its many tried and true community and public officials who share her enthusiasm for public service. Whereas, Janine served as the chair of the East Valley Partnership Superstition Vista Steering Committee for over four years and focused decisions and speakers that furthered the region's interests in balanced and thoughtful land use planning. Whereas, Pinal County has a mission to enhance its citizens' quality of life by driving economic development and providing efficient, effective, needed services throughout talented, motivated employees. Whereas, Pinal County leads through innovation and cooperation, which results in vibrant, safe, and sustainable communities. Whereas, Janine's integrity, honor, and work ethics have served her well for over 25 years as a professional at SRP, but she drew inspiration from her friends and colleagues in Pinal County. Now, therefore, the Pinal County Board of Supervisors celebrate the career of Janine Rovit as a public servant to both SRP and Pinal County, recognizing the special place in her heart for top of the world and commends her for the retirement she has earned this 26th day of May 2021.
Thank you Natasha. Okay, with that, come forth. Recess the board here for a second. Go down and sign the proclamation. And after all of that, I'll give Janine an opportunity to say a few words. So, don't go anywhere, anybody. A little something, yeah. You can hang that on the wall if you wonder.
I was once in jail.
Wait till I get them. Get up here.
Actually, folks, do we mind moving over here?
Look, here the box.
Everybody gets here. Oh, there you go. Come right here. Come over here.
You've got to be in there too.
Come on. And look right here, three, two, one. We're going to do a few of these. One more. Stand by. I want to do one where I get a little different field. And look in here one more time. Three, two, one. Very nice, folks.
There you go.
Chairman Miller and all of supervisors on the Pinal County Board of Supervisors also like to speak to Mr. Liu. Thank you, and you and your staff. I really appreciate being recognized today. You have no idea. It's kind of strange to retire during COVID. It's quiet. You just get to kind of slip out the back door. So, this came as a huge surprise and I can't tell you how much it means to me, particularly coming out of COVID, to receive this kind of recognition. And I think that you all know, hopefully you know, that it has been my pleasure and my distinct honor to serve Pinal County. I would say to my secretary sometimes when I came back to the SRP building in Tempe, "Today's the day. They're going to walk me out." Because I have been down in Pinal County and I got some demands. But we came through it and I appreciate all of your openness, your collaborative approaches, your willingness to still meet with me when we weren't seeing eye to eye. And I'm very proud of the place that we have brought Pinal County because it has been an incredible change from when I first came down to Pinal in 1999. It's really great to be a part of all of the growth and see you all set on a track for incredible greatness that each of your regions, Mr. Supervisors, every single one of your regions is headed for a different and a unique, wonderful future. So, I'm proud to have been a small part of that. I want to introduce you today to Ellen Cruz. She makes me look like this. Ellen is a fantastic civil engineer, has been working with me at SRP for many, many years. In my last years at SRP, I did work very closely with overseeing chamber of commerce work. And Ellen became a board member for the Chandler Chamber and they right away put her as chair of the Public Policy Committee. So, we talked daily about, you know, what they wanted to do with this and what they wanted to do with that. And she and I have really fallen into a great rhythm. And it's wonderful to see her take the baton and she is going to run with it. So, she's your girl and she's going to do a fantastic job for you. Ellen? So, let you get on with your meeting. Thank you for having me and I really, really appreciate being recognized today.
Thank you, Janine.
Thanks for your service.
All right, moving on. Brings us to item number three. Presentation of certificates of service to employees for 20, 25 years. Mr. Liu.
Thank you, good morning. We have five long-term serving employees to honor today and believe we're lucky enough to have four of them with us. One of them that we don't have with us, I'd like to recognize since she's not here, but her name is Tammy Ervin and she is a jury manager with the clerk of the court. Over her career, which began in 2001, she started out as a deputy clerk. She was promoted to a judicial account clerk. And then in 2014, a deputy clerk four. In 2015, an administrator three. And then in 2021, courtroom clerk manager. And then now the jury manager. So, she's had a great long career, the kind that we like to see somebody grow and develop into senior management positions with us here at the county. And she's been here for 20 years. And then we have four others here and I think we're also lucky enough to have their elected officials and/or department heads with us to honor them. So, we could start with Paul Billick at the county attorney's office. And as you walk up and if you and the county attorney would like some words, if you don't mind, I'll go ahead and read your career history here. That began in 2001 as a PC desk analyst. And then in 2006, as a service desk supervisor. In 2010, a senior service desk analyst. And then in 2011, promotion to the current position that you're in. So, congratulations and thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the Board of Supervisors and the citizens of Pinal County for giving me the opportunities and to allow me to succeed. 20 years, it doesn't really seem like it when you love what you do and you love the people that you do it with. So, once again, thank you.
I've got to embarrass Paul just for a couple of seconds. He's my IT guy. So, for the last 18 months, he's been a lifesaver. You know, the reality is sometimes we take the IT stuff for granted until there's an issue and then all of a sudden they're the most important person in the room. He's never held that against us because for the last 18 months, he is just running around like a chicken with his head cut off. There used to be two positions that really did the IT work in our office. I came in, I was like, "Ah, we only need one." And we were able to limp by until this last 18 months. And then Paul has essentially taken a yeoman's work on. He's been doing the work of two people. He's been outstanding in transitioning our office, working from home. So, my sincere appreciation to him and everything that he does and just all of the IT teams because they never get the recognition that they truly deserve. And Paul, thank you for everything that you've done. You've made my four and a half years here much, much better and much easier than they probably should have been. So, I appreciate it.
Chairman, are we going to do one picture with everybody at the end?
Yes, yes, if you don't mind. Thank you, Paul.
And next we have Alex Conrad, who is currently our director for the library services. And he began his career back in 2001 as a librarian, was promoted to the deputy library director in 2009, and then appointed to the library director position in 2020. And he's lucky enough to see our first county regional library operation open up here in probably less than a month in San Tan. So, thank you, Alex, for all your time and service.
I just want to say thank you and it's been a pleasure and honor to serve Pinal County and the residents of Pinal County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next we have Juvenile Court Services. We have Brendan Maroney. And I thought he might be here. Denise Smith?
He's hiding.
Yeah, we got to add more chairs in this room, huh? Brendan began his career in 1996 as a detention officer, was quickly promoted to a juvenile probation officer and then to a probation officer two and has been serving the county for 25 years. Thank you Brendan for your time and please, if you have any words to share with us, we'd appreciate it.
I wasn't planning on speaking.
Those are the best kind.
Just say that in the microphone there.
I wasn't planning on speaking, just saying that. I do appreciate my time here. I've enjoyed it. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a little something for you there.
If I may approach, Selena Angstead with Juvenile Court Services.
In the microphone, please. Yes, you're welcome.
Good morning. Selena Angstead, Juvenile Court Services. I've had the distinct pleasure of working with Brendan my entire career, starting in 1998. But I actually met Brendan on the campus of Florence High School where he came as a school probation officer and he inspired me to want to become a probation officer later in my career. I also had the pleasure of working with him as my juvenile intensive probation partner where I was a surveillance officer and he was the probation officer I worked with. I learned a lot from Brendan throughout my career. I've had the opportunity to promote to a division manager position and a lot of it is because of Brendan and his belief in me and my opportunity to grow within Pinal County. And based on the county's opportunities, we both also got our masters together in a program that the county was actually the benefactors in paying for. So, thank you.
Now we have the rest of the story. Very good. Thank you for sharing that with us.
And we have Aaron Rangel, who might also be out in the hall.
Hey, Brendan, don't leave because there's a photo op. Okay, okay. So, we're looking for...
Aaron Rangel. I see the sheriff out there too.
Is Aaron out there? Can we have somebody?
We need an intercom out there.
I don't see any movement.
I think they're having too much fun back there.
I thought I saw the sheriff earlier, but I don't see him now. Sheriff, is Aaron out there? He's not. Okay.
I'll go ahead and honor Aaron. He's been with us for 25 years, started, has been a detention officer since 1996. So, thank you to Aaron if you're watching and we wish you were here because I'm sure you have probably a good couple of stories to tell us.
All right.
Want to say any words?
Do you have anything to offer? Sheriff Lamb?
I heard that, Mr. Chairman, supervisors. On behalf of Officer Rangel, we wanted to say thank you. 25 years in any job is an accomplishment. 25 years in the corrections profession at the jail is outstanding and we're grateful for men with that type of experience that are willing to come in and do the job every day. So, I'm sorry he's not here, but we're extremely grateful for him and thank you for recognizing him.
Thank you. Thank you, Sheriff. Okay, so do we have whoever was here in attendance? Can we get a photo op with the board? Or do you want the board? Yeah.
And everybody look right here. Three, two. One more. Three, two. Like it, is everybody smiling? Let's do one more just to make sure. Three, two. There we go.
Okay, thank you. It's always a good day when we are able to celebrate the many years of employment that we have loyal employees like we do. And so, that's always a good thing. Brings us to item number four, county managers' report, information only. Mr. Liu, do you have anything you'd like to pass on to us?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And really, this is more for the public's benefit since you were all sitting through the session we had yesterday. But so, the public is aware, we held this strategic planning session for this new board. We do it every four years and we worked from 8:30 to 3:30 yesterday on it and it was a great session. We're really trying to be intentional and purposeful about how the county grows and how the county provides opportunities for...
provides opportunities for the different lifestyles and quality of life that we have throughout the county. And I want you to know that we're working hard on that. All the directors, all the elected officials participated, and we'll be finishing up that process in the next few weeks. In addition, we are partnering with one of our vendors named Paradigm, which the community knows well for the COVID testing that we had been providing throughout the county. We're also partnering with them for mobile vaccination units for vulnerable populations and for those that don't have the ease of access that some others might. So we're scheduling a lot around the copper corridor and then just around some areas even where there's homeless folks. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments for the County Manager? Seeing and hearing none. Brings us to item number five on the agenda, Purchasing Division. Ms. McBride.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, members of the board. I'm Shawna McBride, your Purchasing Manager for Pinnell County. And today I have your Purchasing Division report for May 26, 2021. So first up today, the board has requested to approve the following new contract awards. We recommend consort engineers be awarded a contract for on-call water resources engineering services beginning May 26, 2021, through March 28, 2022, with four optional one-year extensions. This contract will be used by Public Works. We also recommend mammoth towing and service be awarded a contract for vehicle and equipment, parts, repair, and service beginning June 7, 2021, through June 6, 2022, with no extensions remaining on this. This contract will be used by Fleet. Next up, the board has requested to approve the following contract amendments. We recommend approval of Amendment Two to exercise the optional extension period with air mark correctional services for detention food service. This contract is used by the Sheriff's Office and the Youth Justice Center. We also recommend approval of Amendment Two to exercise the optional term extension with the master's touch for printing and mailing evaluation notices. This contract is used by the Assessor's Office. And next, we recommend approval of Amendment Five to exercise the optional term extension with the following suppliers. Auto Nation, Day Auto Supply, Empire Southwest, Green Manufacturing, O'Reilly Auto Parts, Stamps Auto, Superglass, The Tire Factory, Titan Machinery, now as Sons Ray Machinery, USD Inc., Painters Collision, Queen Creek, Southwest Twenty-four Hour Towing, Spectrak Suspension Center, Utility Trailer Sales, and Viking Glass. This contract is used by the Fleet Department. And last, we have some cooperative purchases that are over $250,000 in value. The board has requested to approve. Requisition is 161-337 in the amount of $308,530.57 to CDW for our Microsoft license renewals, and this was requested by our Information Technology Department. And that's your purchasing division report for today.
Any questions about the purchasing report? Comments? Seeing none. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the purchasing division report dated May 26, 2021.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Very good. Thank you, Shawna. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Brings us to item number six, Consent Items. All items indicated by an asterisk will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless the Board of Supervisors, County Manager, or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. So anybody on the board have anything they want? Paul?
Just item number D, just to speak at it.
D? County Manager, public. Okay, item D is going to be pulled. Board's pleasure on the balance.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve consent items A through AM minus D.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Item D. Two. Natasha? Goodman? What we got going on?
Well, I just, you know, I don't know if Carl's here, but what I'd like to do is, you know, these positions, yeah, if you'd come forward, these positions are pretty important with our volunteers. And again, especially as intense as the auditing department is, Carl, self-explanatory, he's worked for the town of Florence for several years. So with that, I'll turn some time over to you if you would take just a couple of minutes, and please.
Yeah, thanks Supervisor Goodman. I am not, of course, Mr. Dudding, but we are very excited.
Can you identify yourself? So we do know who you are?
Yes, my name is Eric Rowan, and I am a managing director with Protiviti, who leads the Internal Audit Department here for Pinnell County. And so I just want to extend my thanks to everyone that is on the Audit Committee, whose reappointments are there in C, and then, of course, the appointment of Mr. Dudding in item D, as you just described. And this is just a really important group to us. They do such a fine job of helping us to accomplish our work effectively and efficiently. It does take a lot of time from them to make sure that we have the perspective of everyone involved and from the different communities. It's so helpful to us that they are very involved in your communities and that they are an important part of the communities. And from that perspective, just want to say thanks. It makes our job easier. I know it makes your job easier as well. And thank you for supporting them all in the reappointment and appointment process. Any questions for me?
No, thank you. And so I appreciate it. So with that being said, I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chair, that we approve item number D on the consent items.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for item D on the consent agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Thank you. And thank you for bringing that up, Supervisor. At this time, I'm going to recess the Board of Supervisors meeting and open up the Flood Control District Board of Directors meeting. So we have two items here. Item number one is consent items. All items indicated by an asterisk will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a board member, County Manager, or a member of the public objects at the time the item is called. So we have A and B on consent. Anything polled? Seeing none. Do I have a motion for consent items on the Flood Control District?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve consent items A and B.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Brings us to item number two. Mr. Watermaker. Discussion approval or disapproval of a lease renewal between Pinnell County Flood District Control and landlord of Pam DeVita Foundation?
Yeah, that's correct. Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Chris Wanamaker, County Engineer. Yeah, this item is a lease renewal with the Pam DeVita Foundation. They lease the property that we own, which is a flood control basin, and they use it for a community garden, and they also maintain the property for us. This item was placed on the regular agenda because there was actually an execution error in the document. We've since corrected the document, and the Pam DeVita Foundation has concurred with the correction. So we should be good for approval.
All right.
Any questions?
Any questions for County Engineer? Okay. Seeing none. Do I have a motion for item number two in the Flood Control District?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number two as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Thank you. I adjourned the Flood Control District meeting and opened up the Pinnell County Library District Board meeting. I have items one and two. There's no consent. So item number one, Natasha, your name is on this one, discussion approval, disapproval of the minutes. We don't have a consent?
Yeah.
Okay. And it is?
So we just have the minutes. That's on the Library Board District for approval. Because we do not have a consent agenda, therefore it is a regular item, since we only have the two items on the agenda.
Please read those minutes, and do you have any questions, comments? Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number one on the agenda.
Okay, I have a motion to approve item number one on the Pinnell County Library District Board District meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Thank you. Brings us to item number two, decision approval, disapproval of a request to create a new job classification, branch manager.
Good morning, Chairman Miller, and good morning, members of the board. Alexander Conrad, the Director of the Pinnell County Library District. I'm here to request your approval of the creation of a new job classification of branch manager within the Pinnell County Library District. There's capacity within our budget for this position for the remainder of the year, and it's also included in our requested budget for next year. There's no impact to the general fund. This position will oversee the staff, facilities, budget, and operations of the Santan Valley Branch Library. They will plan, coordinate, and evaluate library services and programs at the branch and create and implement policies and procedures. I've worked with the Human Resources Department to create the job description and conduct a market survey to put forward a job classification and compensation that reflects the responsibilities of this position. Your consideration in creating this branch manager position is greatly appreciated. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions on this item? Seeing none. Board's pleasure?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the request to create a new job classification of branch manager within the Pinnell County Library District.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Thank you. Okay, we're going to reopen up the, make sure I'm on the right number here.
Nine.
Nine. We're going to reopen up the Board of Supervisors meeting. We're on item number nine, which has a public hearing comment, a decision, approval, disapproval of resolution number 052621-RD20-107. Mr. Ortiz?
Good morning, Chairman, Board of Supervisors, Joe Ortiz, Pinnell County Public Works. Here to present a request for an abandonment of Roughneck Street. It's approximately 33 feet wide between Nodak and Marlowe. As you might have guessed, this is the 1 North 8 East, Apache Junction area. The request came from a Michael Armstrong. He's located just on the north side in parcel 17G. He was able to acquire, let me see if I can scroll down so you can see it. Yeah, there he is. He's highlighted in blue. The request for abandonment is hatched in purple. He was able to acquire 100% of the petition signatures of the adjoining property owners and no issues or conflicts with that. We were also able to send out notification to the local utilities, and there were no objections or conflicts with utilities. Staff has looked at the location, and as you can tell, there's no physical road in that area, and the topography isn't conducive to put in a road without extensive cost. So with that, there's another picture of Marlowe looking north, down Marlowe looking north. There's another picture of looking down Marlowe looking south. And that Marlowe intersection looking east. It's tough to tell, but yeah, there is no physical road in that location right now. That's probably the best picture. And like I said, the topography isn't conducive of putting in a road. So staff is recommending moving forward with this abandonment request. With that, I'll take questions.
Any questions for Mr. Ortiz on this item? Hearing none. I'll open up the public hearing at this time. Is there anybody that would like to speak on this item? Seeing none. I'll close the public hearing. Board's pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve item nine, to approve resolution 052621-RD20-107. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, brings us to item number 10. We'll have a public hearing component to it as well. It's a decision approval, disapproval of resolution number 052621-RD20-111. Mr. Ortiz?
Okay, Joe Ortiz, Pinnell County Public Works, back again. Another request for abandonment. This is a request for Monterey Drive, a 33-foot strip along, from Tonto Street north for 330 feet. That's it there. As you can see, the request is the red-hatched area. The request came from the parcel owner on 11C by the name of Timothy Omlin. The petition was able to get, the petitioner was able to get 100% of the adjoining property owners. We also sent out notification to utilities and no conflicts or objections to that abandonment request. As you can see, that's looking north at Tonto Street, up Monterey, and same thing. Topography just doesn't make it conducive to put in a road. You can see the big hill in the way. We don't maintain, we don't plan plans to maintain or put in a new road. There's another picture looking west at Tonto Street, same scenario, pretty bad terrain. There's Monterey looking south, which Tonto Street is in as an ARDP. And like I said, staff, by looking at this topography and no necessity to put in a road, is recommending moving forward with the abandonment. You have any questions?
Any questions? Okay, seeing none. I'll open the public hearing. Anybody want to speak to this item? Seeing none. I'll close the public hearing. Board's pleasure?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve resolution, on the right one, yes, resolution number
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Thank you very much. Brings us to item number 11, Discussion Approval or Disapproval of Fiscal Year 202022 Traffic Case Progress Fund Field Training Grant Application. Wow.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is David Tasco. I'm from the Pinnell County Superior Court, Court Administration. We're here to request approval to submit an application for the Traffic Case Processing Fund Field Trainer Grant. This is an ongoing program provided by the Administrative Office of the Courts. They provide a maximum of $25,000 used to offset a portion of the wages and employee-related expenses of the limited jurisdiction field trainer, who provides case management training and administrative support to all limited jurisdiction courts.
Okay. Any questions? Seeing and hearing none. Board's pleasure?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number 11 as presented.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you, gentlemen. You too.
Brings us to item number 12. Discussion approval or disapproval of the Pinal County Constables and Related Civil Court Administration Process Audit Report. I believe Eric is doing this.
Yes, I'm back.
Morning, Eric.
And I'm the last couple on the agenda, so I guess I'm the one holding everybody back. But, good again to be with you here today, here to talk about our audit report related to the constables. So, if you'll go to the next slide, you'll see some brief summary and a few action plans. So, maybe just a couple of things to note on this one. First of all, this is an audit that we started in 2019, and just want to note that this is much longer audit period than we would expect, or that we prefer. Of course, it would be easy to blame a global pandemic for causing some of this. However, one of the things that came up recently was that the constables did want us to do some updates, and I thought that was a really, really appropriate thing for us to do. So, we were able to work with them and really get from their perspective some of the things that had changed and how well those are going, and also maybe just a couple of updates that we added to the addendum. So, I just want to say that I really appreciate their time in this process. You know, one of the things that I think the internal audit department and the constables also in this discussion is just very proud of the fact that, you know, this was something that -- this was an opportunity for change to make it better for them and better for the county. And this was one of those types of internal audits where we knew something needed to improve. It's very evident to me throughout this process that the constable's job is a very difficult one, and there are opportunities for us as a county to help them. And so, the first one that we -- you can see on the management action plans was really moving them from -- helping to get them more administrative support by having them more directly linked to county management. And so, this is something that we worked with county management really hard on, and in my discussions with them, has been really successful for them, has been really a game changer. Of course, it's always going to be incumbent upon the county management that are working with them directly to keep things updated and to make sure that they're having those open lines of communication with them. But I think this is a really big game changer for them. It's been successful so far, and we're happy that that's working out. You know, number two really has to do with the tools that we provide them to do their best job and to report their activities successfully and have them also compensated appropriately. And again, with some centralization within county management and some updates on some of the tools and standardization, I think this has been a big help to them. They've let us know that, of course, a little bit of paperwork reduction helps them to actually do their job more effectively, and so that's also been a big success. The third one here is worth mentioning because this is probably the one that we amended the most. And what we're trying to encourage here is data-driven decision-making. And I don't think that that has ever really happened with them before. Obviously, they're an elected position whose job is very dependent on different constituents, giving them something to do, right? Actually going out into the community and doing their job. And so, as a part of that, it's really changed a lot with COVID and with their specific responsibilities. And so, this one was amended not because the data was wrong, but because the data is telling us something new over time. And so, again, I think county management have a great opportunity to use the types of data models that we began, to evolve those models as their responsibilities change, and then also to use that data to help them do their job more effectively. So, that's kind of the underlying thoughts on number three. The other two here are just a couple of things that relates to improving documentation. You know, they do have some uphill battles in the way that they report those things, and the state systems, quite frankly, aren't as good as they could be. And so, we do have some, you know, data anomalies, and doing some of these key documentation is -- can be hard, given the specific situations that they're in. Making sure that those things reconcile is another thing that I think county management will be in a much better position to reconcile for the benefits of constituents and the constables. And so, those are in progress and also improving. And then again, just the last thing here, again, related to data. This is not something that has to do specifically just with Pinal County. This is a state issue. We've been working hard on partnering with other, as you can see, an intergovernmental agreement with Yabapai County to use a better system that is expensive, and also, again, another great idea by county management to leverage tools that are out there that we don't have to -- that we don't have to pay for and can be more efficient and help us get the job done. So, those are the highlights there on the findings, the action plans and their status. Again, we don't want audits to take this long. I did think amending it wasn't appropriate, and I'm really proud of the work that the constables put in, that internal audit put in, that county management has put in, and this function has really made a lot of improvements in the time that we've been working on it. So, with that, I'll take any questions.
Any questions for Eric?
Supervisor, good. Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the part where you say that they're being underutilized by the county, I mean, my understanding is their role is to administer or to serve papers, right? Is there more that's to their position? Because as far as the county is concerned, I mean, those papers only come from the constituents that are out there. So, when you say that they're being underserved as a county perspective, help me understand that better.
Yeah, so what we're trying to say there is there are some other private options out there. And those, it is the right of the constituents to choose a private option as opposed to the public option, but it's also the opportunity for people to inform them of what their options are. And we actually determined, again, in our analysis, that they were doing a better job in most circumstances and a more efficient job than the private sector was. And so, the point to that was that we should be taking advantage of that opportunity even more. Now, again, this is the one that got amended, right? Based on the fact that COVID has significantly changed their role in a couple of specific situations, especially with the rental and the housing types of problems that have presented themselves. So, they also pointed out very appropriately that within the data set, the 2018 data, there was six constables, I'm sorry, eight constables, and now we're down to six. And so, again, there have been some changes, and as I said, kind of as I related to number three, our point in this was how can we best utilize their function number one, and how can we make those decisions using data? And the data isn't very good, but it's getting better, and we found opportunities to make that data better, and county management is going to use more data-driven decision-making in the future, and I think that's what's going to benefit them over the long run.
Thanks, Eric.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair, I appreciate the amendments to the audit, because I know it stirred quite a kerfuffle.
Yeah.
And so, that's great that we were able to tame that down and that the constables were able to add some input to this. Thank you.
Of course.
Supervisor, good.
Thank you, Chairman. And we talked about the duties of the constables. They also stand by on evictions. Is that part of their duty, too?
That's correct.
And how did that figure into the equation in terms of time spent?
It's increased -- it has significantly -- so, first of all, the current situation, the pandemic situation, has made more of those, obviously, as a part of their job. But number two, the inconsistencies in the application has also made their job harder, right? So, inconsistencies in application, not just in Pinal County, but across our state and really across our nation. So, people are being informed within the public, you know, that they have a right to stay in their place based on maybe a national news report, maybe a state news report, maybe even a county news report, but yet those individual decisions can vary based on different circumstances. And so, it has made their job immensely more difficult. And in fact, they report to us that in many situations, they are left to make some of these decisions on their own, and those can be really tough decisions. So, again, the amount of time that it takes to do this is extraordinary, the level of difficulty, and I have empathy for that part of their job right now.
And isn't it true that at some point in the not-too-recent past, the salaries for constables was reduced?
So, again, trying to use data-driven discussions, I don't think that it has actually been reduced from an actual salary perspective, but of course, we tried to include the benefits and the other types of compensation that kind of come along as more of a package, especially as we were using the information that came through from a budget perspective, so kind of the actuals. And again, I'd have to, you know, double-check with the data, but it's been consistent. And as they would report, you know, those have to be approved in a different way, which is why we were trying to also give them an opportunity, using the data, to express, you know, what are the jobs that they're doing? How much time does that take? And is their compensation appropriate? And I think all of those things now, within the hands of county management, there is additional information to help make those decisions in the future.
Okay.
Is that fair?
Yes.
Any other questions or comments at this time? This is an action item, so Board's pleasure?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Pinal County Constables and Related Civil Court Administration Process Audit Report.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Very good. Thank you. Moves us to item number 13. This is an audit. This item?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, discussion, okay. You good? Can we move forward? Eric, you good to go?
Yep. Yes, the next item is just a quick update here. I thought while I was here...
Bring that bat up here and hit me.
Right. You know, everyone leaves, you know, when internal audit is introduced, and, you know, they put us last on the agenda, and it's very nice of you all to stay. So, I appreciate someone, one person's probably watching on TV, maybe my coworker. So, that being said, while I was here, I just thought I'd give you a highlight of a couple of things that we're doing in the next couple of months. First of all, as we always do, is we perform our follow-up procedures in the last month or so of every fiscal year. So, of course, we'll do that in June. Right now, we have about 30 open observations relating to six audits that happened over the last two years. Of course, we will follow up with the process owners to make sure that those action plans are either complete based on the approved timeline or have made progress, and we'll update those and give them the opportunity to let us know and understand what might have changed that affected those. So, like I said, we do this in June of every year, and it has been a really effective process for everyone involved. And then in August, we will have, as we always do again, our annual risk assessment update, which happens to kind of correlate, sorry, it'll be in July and August, always correlates again with our new fiscal year. So, we will pick a week, hopefully, that works for everyone with county management, with you all as supervisors. As you probably know, we have a three-year risk assessment process. So, that first year happened last year where we set out broad, relatively broad objectives for that three-year timeframe, and then every year we update that. And with the very specific budget that we've been given by county management, we determine the projects that we're going to do for this next year. And so, we do that by doing selective interviews, first of all, one with each of you, so we'll hope to accomplish that at least one week in July altogether. I'm sorry, individual meetings with each of you, and then again with select county management and other elected officials, and we'll make sure that we go through that process. That process will ultimately end up with a list of projects that we will do for fiscal year 2022. That will be approved by the audit committee first, and then it'll be brought to you for a final approval, and then we will do our work for fiscal year 2022. Questions on that?
Any questions?
Thank you, though.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sounds like a plan.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Eric. Have a good day.
Yep.
Okay, that's all the items on the agenda today. This meeting is adjourned. Out of here.